Now call to order this meeting of the School Board of Independent School District 624. Would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thompson.
Aye.
Arcan, aye. Beloit.
Aye.
Daniels.
Aye.
Newmaster.
Aye.
Strife OJ.
Aye.
I would ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have before us an agenda. May I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
In a second, Kathleen.
And by Daniels. Any questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion passes, and we now have an agenda. Next, we have a consent agenda, and this consists of various items that come before us monthly. It includes the minutes for our previous meetings, invoices, overnight trips, and personnel changes. It also includes donations from our families and community members, and as always, our community is extremely generous, and we are grateful for their support of our staff and students. May I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Beloit, and a second by?
Second.
Newmaster. Any questions or discussion? This will require a roll call vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Thompson.
Aye.
Arcan, aye. Beloit.
Aye.
Daniels.
Aye.
Newmaster.
Aye.
Strife OJ.
Aye.
Motion passes, and we now have a consent agenda. It is now time for the public forum portion of the meeting. There was one request submitted to speak. Public forum allows for three minutes per speaker. With one minute remaining, an orange card will be held up. At 30 seconds, a yellow card will be held up. At the end of the three minutes, a red card will be held up, and the gavel will be tapped. Speakers will be called to the microphone and recognized one at a time. Only those individuals who have been recognized will be allowed to speak. School district policy and data privacy laws preclude personnel and student matters or data from being discussed publicly. The speaker who requested to address the school board this evening is Tim Klecker. Welcome. We will now move into our informational item portion of the meeting. We have two informational items, student recognition with Dr. K.
All right, thank you, Chair Thompson, members of the board. Tonight, we celebrate White Bear Lake Area Schools cast, crew, and orchestra pit members who participated in the fall musical, who participated in the fall musical Little Shop of Horrors, a production that received accolades as part of the Hennepin Theater Trust Spotlight Awards Program. Well done, students, and thank you to the staff and family members who supported the students along the way.
So all of that activity in our general fund closes into our unassigned, or most of it closes into our unassigned fund balance, that's the bottom line in blue, that would put us at $10,256,000. Now, the unassigned fund balance is what we think of as our checking account. So how much do we need in savings to really be able to meet our expenses, you know, month over month? And this would put us at a 7.5% ending fund balance, and the school board policy is that we maintain an 8% fund balance. So we're not quite there, and so by policy, we need to come up with a plan to get us back up to that 8%. And so for us, that means looking at budget adjustments so that we can, so we can get to that. Going forward into the next two school years then, you can see that we are projecting in yellow some budget adjustments, and this, these budget adjustments are maintaining the 7.5% fund balance. So about $1.4 million of budget adjustments for next year, and then right now, again preliminarily, 2.7 for the '25-'26 school year. Those adjustments would be necessary to continue to maintain that seven and a half percent fund balance. We do feel that that's the right target for us right now. We'll continue to work on the budget, and we'll bring that forward to you again in May and tighten up, you know, for the '25-'26 school year. So timelines, so later this evening, we'll ask for your approval of this revised budget, then work on what the budget adjustments might look like, and bring that forward to you at the March work session. And then the May work session will incorporate those adjustments into the budget and bring forward the preliminary budget for the '24-'25 school year, and then in June, ask for the approval of that.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions? Don't Mrs. Strifogee?
Do these numbers take into account the contract negotiations that have been, contracts that have been settled?
They do, yes. Thank you for, yep, that question. Yes, the settlements that we have, that we're bringing forward later this evening have been, estimates for those have been rolled into the budget, yes.
Danielle?
Comment. Also impacting our budget is federal dollars, which, you know, we get most of our funding from the state.
Correct.
So advocating with senators, congresspeople would really be helpful, which some of us have been able to do, it's great. But, you know, those programs are also right, currently being cut, Title I, Title II, some of those fundings are also being cut, and we have never had federal funding for special education as promised from the federal government at 40%. I think we're at about 11 or 12%. So that really impacts what we can do locally too. So I just wanted to bring that up as a point, it's not just about local taxes in the state, it's also about at the federal level, which we're not either keeping up with inflation or our expenses, so.
That's a very valid point, yes.
I just want to point out too, because I know with members of our community, it gets very confusing because they see that we've built all these buildings, and we had that money, and they, you know, have been asked a couple of times, why can't we just move that money over to the fund? And then it's hard to understand for some that that money is there, and that's specifically for that purpose. This is for running the district. That money that we spent building had no impact on this budget, it's totally isolated in its own account, and so making sure that our community knows that, it didn't have an impact either way.
That's a great point of clarification and absolutely true, yes. Those bond funds are completely separate, they're not included in this at all, and it would be illegal for us to transfer them over, yep.
Excuse me, what contracts do we have left outstanding?
Um, we have several, a few. Gosh, you put me on the spot. Our extended day programs are outstanding, we have nutrition services, transportation, custodians, and all of our non-affiliated contracts. I think that's it for the groups. Yep. The majority of our big ones have been settled, but we still have several to go.
Anyone else?
I would just like to make a point too, that we go over these numbers several times throughout the year, so not asking a lot of questions about the nitty-gritty of it all, because we've already, we do that usually in our work-study sessions where we really kind of dig into the things, and just always impressed with the work that you all do in that department. And, you know, if anyone's ever come to listen to our audit report, they always are impressed with how well you are at that number that you come up with. And you don't have all the information, so you're guessing every year, and you do a wonderful job, so thank you.
Thanks, Angela.
Oh, Dr. Newmaster?
As long as we're clarifying, because I always like to look at all the pieces of the budget, and since you don't have a crystal ball and you can't tell what the future is, you can look at demographics, and we look at the birth rate. And that has nothing to do with really where, which school district people are choosing, it's like where people are born, I mean, they may go elsewhere, but it seems like the cohort, the group of kids is smaller for everything, whether it's sports, enrollment, or schools. So I assume you don't have any good news on that side.
I think, I can, the overall statewide, the birth rate is down, and ours is two, so that does impact, obviously. Then a few years later, who is coming to school, right? So there's generally a smaller pool of students available, right? So, yeah, you're right. I'm just gonna, just a couple more things. I think the historic funding narrative, I think, is a little bit irresponsible to be using. I also think, unless you're also talking about the historic mandates that have been placed upon school districts, and so legislators talk about, you know, phrases like that they fully funded education, it's an incredibly irresponsible talking point that's being used, and we have begun conversations with our elected officials about using that kind of narrative, because it's irresponsible. So we're going to continue that message.
Well, thank you very much. We will now move on to our final discussion item, the first reading of school board policies. So discussion item D2, first reading of school board policies. Tonight, the policies 408, 409, 410, 430, and 904 are before us for a first-time reading. Policies are reviewed by the policy committee and brought to the school board twice for review and discussion before approval of any changes. The policies reviewed tonight will be on the March 4th, 2024 agenda or subsequent agenda for second reading. If anyone has any questions or discussion regarding any of the policies tonight, if you could refer us to the page and the section that you would like to ask questions about. Anyone have any questions tonight? All right, we will now move on to our operational items for the evening. Operational item one, action on the fiscal year '23 revised budget. Operational item E1, action on fiscal year '23 revised budget. Ms. Johnson?
Hello. So as we just went over the--
Be fiscal year '24.
Oh, '24.
Yep, there's a type, there's a type in our packet, so.
Correct.
Thank you.
We just went over the revised budget for the '22-'23 school year and went over it in more depth at the January 22nd work session.
Be '24 school year.
'23-'24 school year. Yep. A summary is included in the board packet for tonight's meeting. The recommended action is to approve the fiscal year '22-'23, it says again, '23-'24 revised budget as recommended.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. You've heard the recommendation, may I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Strifogee and a second by Ms. Beloit. Any questions or discussion? All right, this will require a roll call vote, I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand? Aye. Beloit?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Strife OJ?
Aye.
Approved. Our action on annual resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons therefore. Operational item E2, Mr. Mons.
Good evening. So this is a resolution that we prepare and bring every February regardless of what's happening in the district, because we have changes even in student interest when it comes time for registration that can lead to reductions. In this case, as we've just heard, we do anticipate also needing to make some budget reductions, but that's the purpose for us bringing this forward every February, this allows us to make any necessary changes as we move through the spring. And would you like me to read the resolution?
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
All right. Whereas the financial condition of the school district and a reduction in student course enrollment dictates that the school board must reduce expenditures immediately, and whereas this reduction in expenditures must include discontinuances of, sorry, of positions and discontinuance or curtailment of programs, and whereas a determination must be made as to which teachers' contracts must be terminated and not renewed, and which teachers may be placed on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits in affecting discontinuance of positions. Therefore, be it resolved by the school board of independent school district number 624 as follows, that the school board hereby directs the superintendent of schools and administration to consider the discontinuance of programs or positions to effectuate economies in the school district and reduce expenditures, and make recommendations to the school board for the discontinuance of programs, curtailment of programs, discontinuance of positions, or curtailment of positions, as per the board fund balance policy.
All right, you've heard the recommendation, may I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Daniels in a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Beloit. Any questions or discussion? All right, this will require a roll call vote, will the clerk please call the roll?
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand? Aye. Beloit?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Strife OJ?
Aye.
And the motion is approved. All right, we will now move into action, our operational item three, which is also Mr. Mons, action on the tentative agreement, '23-'25 fiscal years clerical school service employees SEIU Local 284.
Perfect, and I'm just going to make a couple of comments that will be true of the next three agenda items here. One note that I'd like to make is simply that all of the tentative agreements that have been reached, and I'll be seeking approval for, have all been settled within the parameters discussed in closed session. So just want to make that statement for all of these. And then, this is going to, I don't want to just repeat myself as we go through especially these two items with our SEIU groups that we've reached a tentative agreement with. So today, that's our para-professor, our para-educator group, and then also our clerical group. And I'd just like to say that, you know, we had an impassioned round of bargaining, I would say. We really spent a lot of time diving into issues that were affecting that group, issues that have been affecting the district, especially monetarily, and I really appreciate the commitment on the part of both our partners with SEIU and the district's bargaining team in making sure that we showed up every day to have those conversations. So we put a lot of hours into these, and we were pleased that at the end, we were able to find a resolution that I think is the right resolution for both sides, and that's what's reflected in both of the recommendations that I'll make. So first up here is, and I'm sorry, it's the para-educator group, correct? That was first up?
Clerical.
No, it's the clerical group.
Yep.
So first off, I will recommend that the board approve the tentative agreement with SEIU Local 284, our clerical bargaining unit.
You've heard the recommendation, may I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Arcand in a second.
Second.
By Dr. Newmaster. Any questions or discussion? This will require a roll call vote, will the clerk please call the roll?
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand? Aye. Beloit?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Strife OJ?
Aye.
All right, then the motion is approved. Then we move into action on tentative agreement, '23-'25 fiscal years para-educator school service employees SEIU Local 284. Mr. Mons?
And so again, with the same sentiments, I will recommend that the board approve the tentative agreement with our SEIU para-educator bargaining unit.
For the recommendation, may I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Dr. Arcand in a second.
Second.
By Ms. Daniels. Any questions or discussion? And this will also require a roll call vote.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand? Aye. Beloit?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Strife OJ?
Aye.
And the motion is approved. Moving to action on tentative agreement, '23-'25 fiscal years principals association. Mr. Mons?
Yes, and so lastly here for these recommendations, I'm recommending that you approve the tentative agreement that we've reached with the principals association, and the note that I'll make there is that we have appreciated over a number of rounds of bargaining that we continue to move in a direction where we have a really collaborative process in which we're able to have a really transparent conversation and look to solve any problems that the group may be working through. So with that, I'll make the recommendation.
Thank you. You've heard the recommendation, may I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Arcand in a second.
Second.
By Strife OJ. Any questions or discussion? And this will also require a roll call vote.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand? Aye. Beloit?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Strife OJ?
Aye.
And the motion is approved. Thank you, Mr. Mons.
Thank you very much.
All right, we will now move on to the final item of the evening, the board forum. School board members now have an opportunity to share things that are going on in the schools and in the community, as well as any events that they have or are participating in related to their roles as the board. Anybody? Dr. Newmaster?
Well, I can just say, watching that line of talented performers in many areas that you and I attended, I can't remember the title of it, but it was the school district best of the best orchestra choirs and bands, and they were just amazing. It was really, looking at the talent and the effort people put in was wonderful, and it was fun to see a different, we were up at Forest Lake, and it was fun to see a different high school, and they're nice, but gosh, ours are nice. And I was at an event that White Bear was one of the cosponsors of by hosting it nicely, and it's a beautiful place to go. I've been at South Campus many a time, back when it was Mariner, and the theater is great, the acoustics are good, and we had Lunar New Year with about 400 people attending from Brainerd to Rochester in Wisconsin, and it was, it's a group that started in White Bear Lake area, but we've got a lot of local people that have families with lots of different ethnicities, and we had a really good time. But White Bear staff did a great job, and the building was just awesome, the tech support was wonderful, and White Bear's a great school to have an event at. Thanks to everybody that helped us.
I will just close with, Margie and I, it was the suburban East Conference Music Concerts for Choir Band and Orchestra, and it's always just amazing to me to watch those students come together from surrounding districts. They don't practice all the time together, they have a short window of time to practice these songs with these amazing conductors they bring in from all around the country, and it is just always amazing to watch them perform and show how talented they are in our musical programs in school, so really great. And the Lunar New Year celebration was also a wonderful event to attend, and so, yeah, always good things happening in the district. All right, with that, I would ask for someone to make a motion to adjourn.
Chair Thompson, I move for an adjournment.
And we have a motion, and is there a second?
Yes.
A second by Ms. Daniels. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.